Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action were assigned in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Board Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the Board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And I just want to add that if you noticed, we don't have the clock up right now. I heard from a few of our constituents that they feel intimidated sometimes with that clock, so we want to be welcoming. We want to hear from you. Again, we want to hear from you. Do not hesitate to, if you have something to say to the Board. I just want to make sure that I will be keeping time here. If necessary, I will remind you to wrap up. But I know you're going to do a great job and keep it under three minutes. And please, address your comments to myself. Do not mention any employees' names, or do not turn around and talk to the audience. So, thank you very much. Go ahead, Madam Secretary.
The first person, Ali Bazee, would like to come to speak to the Board, who is a parent. They will be coming with other parents approaching with them, but he will be the only one speaking. Would like to come to speak to the Board about the renewal of millage and the need for all parents to support its passage. Vote yes.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm here, as you can see, with a few parents. We are parents of children with special needs that attend Dearborn Public Schools, or represent other families that have children that are students that have special needs that attend Dearborn Schools. And we just want to share our thoughts on and our support for the passage of the millage. Dearborn Schools Special Education Program, in our opinion, is one of the best in the state of Michigan on a personal level. Before my son was born, and we knew that he was going to have special needs, we began looking for what we need to do and educated ourselves on the best way to educate a child with special needs. There are many federal laws and things in place that make sure that children in public school are taken care of. And when we educated ourselves, we realized that public school was the place it needs to be. And the more we educated ourselves, the more we realized Dearborn Schools was the place we need to be. So, we moved to Dearborn for this. And I know that there are a lot of parents, and you can see, again, there are a few here, but there are over 2,000 children with IEPs in Dearborn Schools. And the support that they receive in the classroom, the individualized support they receive in the classroom, the ability for them to go into Gen Ed with parapro support, the ability for them to get OT and PT support, a lot of those funds, as we understand it, come from the operations funds. So, this millage is going to directly affect at least 2,000 of these children and these students. And we want to make sure that all parents understand that these students are served very well in Dearborn Schools, are served very well by Mr. Assaly and his team, that he has grown over the past few years. And we want to make sure that that continues. We want to make sure that our students continue to receive the wonderful, wonderful education that Dearborn Schools provides them, so they can grow and be contributing members to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, parent Jawan Napa would like to come to speak to the Board.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jawan Napa. I am here representing the PTA Council. And as a parent of this district and a resident of this district for the last 17 years, we, as a group, as PTA, put our whole heart behind this millage. And we understand that if this billage does not pass, it is detrimental to our students, to our families, to our, you know, if you want to look at it from a property value. You know, people come into cities for strong schools. And I guess you spoke of it, President Berry, you know, this isn't the time to hold people accountable. And not, I mean, every time is always the time to hold people accountable, absolutely. Like, that's not really, but, you know, in this situation, we would be harming our students. So, as a PTA Council, as parents, as citizens, we are 100% behind this millage. And we hope that you guys vote yes, and, you know, we get things rolling, and we move forward. And, you know, it's always, like, for me personally, I always find it unfair when people compare our district to other districts in, just in our neighborhood. I get a lot of people say, "Well, Northville is so great, and Canton is so great." But, you know, those school districts are great, but look at their district size. We have 20,000-plus students, whereas, like, Northville has 7,000. It's not apples to apples. It's apples and oranges. Even, we're the third-largest district in the state. So, even comparing us to Detroit, which is the largest district, they're double, more than double our size. So, that's not even a fair assessment. So, we are a unique district, and, you know, we have to look at everything that's going on. There's always going to be issues. And when you stand up at this podium and you assess these issues, you know, you're always looking. I wouldn't be here if I didn't love the district and I didn't love this city. So, for me, it's like, when I come up here and I address issues, it's because you always want to see what you love do its best. So, like, for me, when I talk to my girls, for example, I'm always setting high standards. So, for me, it's like, we're always discussing, you know, what needs to be, you know, where we have to work on, even as myself. So, like, you know, I hope people understand that this is very important. The parent who just spoke about, you know, special education? Yes, absolutely, I will wrap it up, sir. Again, a cut to special education is detrimental to those special-needs students. So, please vote yes and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, parent Nabil Athalawaya would like to come to speak to the Board.
He's passing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next, student Medina Faraj from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about military renewal.
Good evening. My name is Medina Faraj, and I am a sophomore at Dearborn High. I have been a Dearborn Public Schools student since kindergarten, having previously attended Gearpark Elementary and St. Middle School. I was asked to speak tonight on behalf of the upcoming millage renewal on the February 27 election ballot. This millage renewal accounts for $41 million of the district's general budget of $274 million. This millage accounts for 16% of our current operating costs.
Excuse me, Medina, slow down a little bit. Thank you.
Like staffing, transportation, and other day-to-day expenses. As a student in Dearborn, I cannot imagine having services cut by 16%. As a resident of Dearborn, at 15, I have no voice in this election, and so I'm here today to advocate for the students of Dearborn that our voice is heard. However, I feel that the voice that is being heard against this millage are the voices of adults who have never walked in the footsteps of what it means to be a Dearborn student. I am glad that my parents value education so deeply that, to them, voting yes for our schools is a no-brainer, because they know a yes vote is a vote for me. It's a vote for your students, too. A vote for your children, too. A vote to continue to providing amazing opportunities for students. Dearborn students are going to MIT, UMass, Harvard, Dartmouth, and Yale. Dearborn students are graduating with associate degrees in five years and entering into competitive and lucrative careers, from nursing to technology to engineering. These students have the opportunity to participate in a wide variety of athletic opportunities in middle school and high school given by this millage. Dearborn students are arriving as newcomers and learning to speak, read, and write English within a few short years. Dearborn students are giving back to their community by participating actively in clubs, organizations, and groups. Dearborn students are building relationships with their teachers, coaches, principals, and peers that go beyond the classroom and prepare them for the real world. I, for one, have experienced this as a Dearborn student. Every single day in schools throughout our city, Dearborn students are engaging in learning opportunities that are building their future. Please continue to invest in Dearborn students. Please continue to invest in the future of Dearborn. Vote yes on the millage renewal on February 27, and thank you so much for your time.
Next, student and community member Lea Farhat from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about the military renewal.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Leal Farhat, and I am a recent graduate from Dearborn High School's class of 2023. As a Dearborn Public Schools alumni, with both of my younger sisters being current students and both of my parents being graduates of Dearborn Public Schools, the renewal of the millage is imperative, not only to my family, but several other families as well. The value of a good and supportive K-12 education is crucial, as it sets the stage for a student's future. Knowing that I was able to benefit from the millage funding and was adequately prepared for my college career drives me to want the same for the current and all future generations of Dearborn Public Schools. If the millage does not get renewed, there will be a 16% or $41 million loss from the budget. This accounts for a substantial loss to the central aspects of our education system, such as staff, athletic programs, student programs, et cetera. A 16% reduction in funding would be absolutely disastrous. Larger class sizes, less funding for children, elimination of important activities like athletics and the arts, and less staff would result from it. We, as a community, cannot allow this to occur. A primary priority should be renewing the millage. The core of our community is our schools. They unite us and help our kids get ready for the future. The millage supports many of the wonderful extracurricular and academic programs that our schools offer. It covers the cost of modern technology, fewer class sizes, cleaner buildings, and updated textbooks. It encourages activities that teach our children leadership, teamwork, and innovation, such as robotics, debate, theater, and team sports. These courses broaden their perspectives and assist students in finding their unique hobbies and abilities. Teachers are also significantly impacted by millage financing as well. To be effective educators, they depend on resources and chances for professional development. We run the risk of overworked and undersupervised teachers due to staff reductions and increased class sizes. We honor our teachers' work by renewing the millage. It enables them to provide every student with the customized attention that they merit. A yes vote on the millage is essentially an investment in the future of our community. It is a pledge to provide our kids with the greatest education possible. Wide-ranging advantages include solid home prices and a thriving neighborhood economy driven by a workforce with a high-level education. And so, I encourage you to join me in voting yes. Our siblings and children are counting on us. The future generations are counting on us, and most importantly, our students are counting on us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, student Ava Walski from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about the military renewal.
Good evening, Superintendent Maleko, President Berry, and the Board. My name is Ava. I'm a senior at Dearborn High. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the millage renewal that is on February 27. I'm a proud product of Dearborn Public Schools and have attended Dearborn Public Schools since preschool. Dearborn Public Schools have provided me with so much more than just an education. Since elementary school, I have been involved--
Ava, slow down just a little bit, please. Thank you.
Since elementary school, I have been involved with numerous clubs, organizations, and sports teams. I believe that these programs have given me a strong foundation as I move into the next phase of my educational career. The millage renewal is so important, as it supports all after-school activities and as one of the many student athletes in the district. The millage is vital to keeping our programs funded. Without these after-school activities, I wouldn't have the communication skills that have helped support me through my educational steps. I wouldn't have had the opportunity to both showcase and develop leadership by becoming a captain in both my sports and supporting my teammates. These activities help and encourage students to come out of their comfort zone or participate in something they love, free of charge. I urge you to vote yes and support the millage renewal. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Next, parent Crystal Paulson would like to come to speak to the Board about the millage.
The reason I'm asking people to slow down is because we have a translator that needs to keep up, so I appreciate that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, since I haven't been a part of the meetings the last couple of months, because my mom's been battling lung cancer. So, during this, I have stayed in contact with the President, superintendent, not only about the budget, the audit, and the operation millage, because I didn't have the time to be able to fulfill every aspect of my life. So, last week, I seen the boycott. The following week, I see vote yes for HFC. So, when did it become a campaign? What millage has ever come out? Now, we're back to a college and a district school. One of the entities have now started a campaign. So, me, as a mother of two children in the schools, I'm worried. My kindergarten, who is autistic, there's only 19 kids in his class, okay? At Nolan, that is about the average size, class size. You cut the operation, you're going to double the class size. You want to know what upsets an ASC child? Being confined in an overpopulated room. That gets the behaviors. The parents can't even step in, because there's no room. So, what is going on? Because I really thought this millage was going to go easy-peasy. And yes, I support it. As a parent who has done everything, I still support it, because it's the parents. Teacher, the principal at Nolan. I mean, Mike hasn't even got a chance yet to finish everything. He has started with the ASC department. He is one of the first special education directors to actually bring in the medical staff for the students. What's going to happen if it doesn't pass? He can't finish. So, I would like to see more support. And it's really upsetting that we're now in a campaign, and now the teachers can't even advocate about it, because they work. So, messed up.
Thank you.
Next, community member Stacy Sob from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about the millage.
Good evening, Superintendent Maleko and Board Trustees. I would just like to say, as a citizen of Dearborn, it's very important that we vote yes for the millage. This millage is important, because it makes a huge impact on our schools. If it doesn't pass, schools will lose many staff members. That means class sizes would be much larger. Please help keep our district above the rest by voting yes on February 27. Thank you.
Next, community member Nazrin Naj from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about the operational millage renewal.
Sorry. Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Berry, Dr. Maleko, and our guests in the audience tonight. I stand before you as a lifelong resident of Dearborn, a Dearborn Public Schools graduate, a taxpayer, and a homeowner in the city of Dearborn. Tonight, I am speaking as a citizen of Dearborn, who is in full support of the operating millage renewal. As you heard this evening, the operational millage is up for renewal and will be on the Tuesday, February 27 ballot. The operational millage is a part of the general fund that is used for daily operations. It affects 16% of the district budget. This is money that goes directly to our school district. It pays for staffing, utility bills, classroom supplies, busing, and support for our students. It impacts our teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, programs, and many others. It does not fund major school construction or renovation projects. But without this funding, the district will drop to one of the lowest per-pupil general fund revenues in Michigan. It is important to note that this is an already-existing operational millage that has been a part of the per-student funding since 1995 and has changed how schools have been funded. It is, this is a millage that needs to be renewed every 10 years. It was renewed in 2004, 2014, and is up for renewal in 2024. Our district prides itself on putting our students first, and it is in the best interest of our students that we vote in favor of the operating millage renewal, so that we can continue to provide our schools with things like smaller classroom sizes. Additionally, the renewal will allow the district to continue providing our students with extra support staff to address not only the academic needs of our student, but the social and emotional needs as well. In closing, this operating millage renewal is not only good for our students, but vital for the future of our students and school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, student Judah Abusala from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about the military renewal.
Good evening, Board and community. My name is Judah Abusala. I am a resident and a product of Dearborn Public Schools for 13 years, if you count kindergarten. Currently, I am a senior at Fortson High School, and on behalf of all Fortson students, we urge Dearborn voters to educate themselves on the upcoming millage renewal. I first want to remind all voters that this is a millage renewal. We are renewing the millage. The millage is in place currently, has been established in 1994. This is in no way a new bond or a way to take more money out of your paycheck or a way for you to pay more taxes. The millage is, sorry, the millage is the base of the foundation to ensure our district runs smoothly. Without this millage, our day-to-day functions would be interrupted. Any and all interruptions are directly towards our students and will directly cut our education. If the millage does not pass, the district will lose 16% of funding directly affecting the following. Staffing. This includes teachers, administrators, secretaries, counselors, support staff, coaches, and more than you can know. I know I can't mention names, and even if I could, we'd be here all day. I couldn't, sorry. I could not imagine my success without the guidance from the countless adults to help run our school. If you vote against the millage, students can lose some of the individuals we trust and aspire to be when we grow up. Transportation. This includes busing to and from school each day, attending school field trips to enhance learning, and transportation for all club and sport activities. If you vote against the millage, students can lose the clubs that we value and use to create change in our school. Teaching materials. This includes textbooks, writing supplies, computers, and all other essential tools that enrich the learning experience for me and my classmates. If you vote against the millage, students can lose the essential resources that help us learn and grow academically. To the residents of Dearborn, I leave you with this. You now have a choice. The millage is for students, and here we are, as students, telling you what we want. Please vote yes on the millage renewal on February 27. We have 15 days until then. The future success of all Dearborn Public Schools students, including myself and my classmates, is in your hands. I know it kind of worries me that it's in your hands, because I'm not old enough to vote yet, but-- We hold you accountable. At polling stations, I will be there, and many of my classmates will be there if you have any questions. But at the end of the day, please vote yes for the millage renewal on February 27. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I have to get my serious face on now. Next, student Sandra Girard from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about the millage.
Good evening to the Board and fellow community members. My name is Sandra Girard. I was born and raised here in Dearborn, and I am a senior attending Fortson High School. My role models growing up have always been the people around me, especially from school. The millage is an important and fundamental aspect for us, students and staff members. A vote to keep it intact is more important than a lot of you may expect. This has been implemented into the school system for decades, and it has proven to be an aspect that betters the environment for schools. Everything around me--
Sandra, may I ask you to slow down, please? Thank you.
Where was I? Ooh, hold on. Everything around me at school is thanks to the millage. Without it, 16% of funding will be cut out, and the community will feel the effects of it, especially students' confidence in their education. I urge you to envision this situation. Your child comes home from school, explaining to you the lack of textbooks and supporting staff members. All these things will make you question if this is the environment you want your child to grow in. I was thankful enough to grow as an individual, because I never needed to worry about transportation, teachers, or even if the knowledge I've gained is enough. The positive, that made me positive that there is no way I can fail, and every student deserves that feeling. It is a right. I'm a student who focuses on my academics, clubs, music programs, and sports. I was able to be a part of all of these things because of the millage. I will say, I am not here to say, oh, I lost it again. I was able to be a part of these things because of the millage. Without it, I don't want to say that our future students will fail, but I will say it will make the journey to graduation a lot more difficult than it needs to be. All that is needed from you all today is to remember the words from students like me and believe in our motives, because we may have not lived long, but we have experienced a lot. Most of them have been happy memories from school and had very few to worry about. I'm here on behalf of my current peers. I'm here for the beloved teachers of the district, and I am here for the future students' education. On February 27, please vote yes for the renewal of the millage. Thank you so much.
Next, student Mohammed Ali Faraj from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about the millage renewal.
Good evening, President Berry, Dr. Maleko, and Board of Trustees. My name is Mohammed Ali Faraj. I'm the current 12th grade representative in E-Board, and I'm here on behalf of all my fellow students at Fortson High School. My purpose here tonight is to inform our community about voting on February 27 to renew the millage. Without this funding, the district would drop to one of the lowest peer-pupil general fund revenues in Michigan. There will have to be some cuts to areas such as staffing, transportation, extracurriculars, classroom materials, supplies, and more. These cuts could mean that future students attending Dearborn Public Schools would lose opportunities, such as being members of various clubs and sports teams, which is vital for student success. There could be a potential loss in opportunities for students to join extracurriculars, which would result in less opportunities for our future citizens to be well-rounded. As a senior, I would say I had a great high school experience, because of all the different opportunities I was afforded, along with the help of my counselors and advisors. I wouldn't want to see the upcoming generations miss out on the same privileges I had, thanks to our amazing staff at Fortson, such as my counselor, who, through her guidance, placed me in a position to give back to Fortson by joining the Link Crew Crew. Moreover, our senior class advisor, which is a parent and a student liaison, and she's one of the, and she's the one who mentors us and guides us throughout our senior year, or our band and orchestra teacher that runs the bowling club as well at Fortson, who may also be in jeopardy and losing this vital position of impacting the student body in different ways other than academics. This millage could affect staffing of our teachers, counselors, security, secretaries, custodians, and others that truly impact our day-to-day experiences in school. If the operating millage does not get renewed, incoming and current students will be affected negatively. To be clear, I am here to ask the community to vote yes. Thank you very much, or thank you very much for your time. And I really appreciate the opportunity of allowing our voices to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, student Rami Abdallah from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the Board about military renewal.
Good evenings, good evening, Board and residents. My name is Rami Abdallah, and I'm a sophomore at Fortson High School. When I first heard about this millage renewal, I was walking out of my AP United States History class and into my orchestra class. After hearing about this renewal, I couldn't help but think of all the possibilities of these classes I enjoy and value to get stripped away from me and my classmates. I knew I had to speak up, and that's why I'm here today. What drives you to come to school? A question most commonly asked among many students. Is it your friends, clubs, sports, your education? Imagine what would happen if a student that lives for one of those things comes to school solely for those, for that purpose, finding out that what they love coming to school for is no more. If this millage were to not pass, sports like swimming, golf, bowling, track, cross-country, and more will no longer be due to the lack of funding. These sports also drive students to do good in school due to the grade requirements to participate in the sport. And without the sports they love, what will keep them going? Some teachers will also have a possibility of having to be let go, and that one counselor or teacher you come to school for, who you taught, who you can talk about anything to and developed a strong bond with, will have a possibility of being let down also due to the lack of funding. Classroom sizes will be twice the size they already are because of other classes being taken away, and teachers will also have to go through twice the amount of trouble they already go through in a normal-sized classroom. The class I was talking about in the beginning of the speech, AP United States History, will also have a possibility of no longer being a thing. In fact, all APs will, due to them not being a necessity. And the class I was walking into, orchestra, which students take because of their passion for music or an instrument, will be gone as well. If this renewal were to not pass, it will affect everyone in so many different ways and will ultimately change the way we live life. Please don't take this as anything lightly, and remember that your vote will have a huge impact on students like me. Please vote yes on the 27th, and thank you for listening.
Next, student Mariah Saleh from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about the millage renewal.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Saleh, and I'm a senior at Fortson High School. I'm here today to talk about the operating millage renewal. This renewal is not a new tax or bond. It is a renewal that must be voted on every 10 years. This renewal consists of $41 million that is split up into different areas such as athletics, music and art, extracurricular activities, programs, and more. To explain why I am so passionate about this topic, I would like to start off by saying that I'm a student on part of the Henry Ford Collegiate Academy. This academy is a five-year program that gives students a chance to earn both a high school diploma and an associate's degree. This program is fully funded. Parents and students do not have to pay for anything. It is an amazing opportunity that is offered to students. Before I joined this program, I was a dual-enrollment student. Did you know that more than 2,000 students in Dearborn take dual enrollment courses? It gives students a chance to earn some college credit while they're in high school without
Yes, slow down, please. Thank you.
It gives students a chance to earn some college credit while they're in high school without any cost to them. These types of programs are funded by the operation, operating millage. Without the renewal, students would not have the opportunity to have this type of education. Besides these educational programs, I'd like to explain why I'm so passionate about this topic. I would consider myself an active person in the community. I'm a part of multiple clubs in my school. These clubs affect every person differently. From my own experience, it's been amazing. I am a part of this organization called Letters for Rose. This organization was created to reduce the loneliness among elders and nursing home residents during the pandemic. We write personalized letters and create art crafts and pieces of artwork to give to the residents and to bring them some joy. We actually went to one of the nursing homes last Saturday and volunteered there. We had nice conversations with the nursing home residents and played bingo with them. It was nice to hear how much they enjoyed our visit, and we can't wait to go back to there. It was a great experience that personally impacted my life as well as the residents. This renewal is a big, a big factor when it comes to extracurriculars, activities, and other areas. Without the renewal, it could potentially get rid of these clubs that have such an impact on us students. This renewal will affect everyone's lives in different ways, so I please ask for you to consider what we've said and take the time to vote. Your vote could be the one that changes our lives. Please take the time to vote on February 27th. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of this topic, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next, student Talia Gregory from Dearborn would like to come to the board to speak about the millage.
Good evening, board and fellow community members. My name is Talia Gregory. I'm a senior attending Fortson High School. Being a senior, I get asked a lot, what am I going to major in in college? I want to major in education. A lot of my role models for this decision has come from the district dedicated to educators, and I don't think I could have got to this stage in my educational career without them. The operating millage would help continue to pay for your child's education and various other things that happen within the school district. With your vote, we can continue to buy new textbooks and keep the school in a comfortable temperature for the hot spring days and the cold winters. Without the 16% of the funding that we usually have, there would be a lot of budget cuts in the future. For example, we're talking about teachers and bus driver salaries being cut in half, being able to pay for our AC and utilities, being able to buy new books for the classroom. The millage also helps to support budgets for our STEM and athletic programs. If this gets cut, how will we, how will we, the students, be able to go to the top schools like Harvard or Yale? Our district will fall to one of the lowest peer pupil funding revenues in Michigan if this is not passed by your vote. Teachers are the backbone to the future of our city, society, and world, but you can also make an impact on the matter. Your vote can help teach the future doctors, lawyers, teachers, and mayors, or even our future president to achieve greatness. One of the classes I'm taking right now helped me to be able to write and speak where I could be heard on the platforms such as this one. So please, I really encourage you on February 27th to vote yes for the operating millage. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, community member Dearborn Baseball would like to come to speak to the board about Dearborn Baseball in partnership with the school's youth and Dearborn Rec Department.
Hello. My name is Mark Doughty. I am president of Dearborn Baseball. I have two other commissioners here tonight, or board members, Mike Katona, who is a vice president for our board, and also the coach pitch commissioner, and I have Rob Gordon. He is the Mustang Commissioner that handles the boys and girls in baseball that are ages eight to 10. Today, what we are here to do is we are trying to, we are partners with the City of Dearborn Rec Department. We provide baseball to over 700 kids, boys and girls in the city of Dearborn. We, most of those kids attend Dearborn Public Schools. And what we are looking, or what we are here tonight is to explain our program a little bit to you. We are trying to build our program to support your high school athletics and to get your high school baseball and softball teams better. We have now instituted a program where we are bringing our best of our students, our best of our players, to get them prepared to when they get to the high school level. So we have now two tournament teams that are in the boys group that are starting out as 10-year-olds and 11-year-olds working to get themselves into a better position to play high school baseball. We also have right now, our girls program, our fast pitch program, they have tournament teams that are right now in the 14 and 12-year-old development, and those girls are much further ahead, and you should see in the high school program coming up in the next few years as they get older, a much better participation and much better players playing fast pitching softball for the city of Dearborn and for the school board. What we're, what we're, what we're all about is we're a 501(c)(1) charity. We are working with the city of Dearborn and the rec to help provide this as a sport. But we are kind of running into some roadblocks because we are trying to get out to all of the students in the, in the schools. And we've been having a hard time. We've been producing thousands and thousands of flyers and passing them out to every school, but we're not feeling that we are getting out, especially to the East Dearborn schools. So we started an outreach program the last few years where we tried to go to the schools and teach or talk to the kids about baseball, but we've been running into a little problem with that. But we're now, we're talking with different members on the administration. We're, we are encouraged that we're going to find a way to get to those students. What we, when we made a presentation outside of the school last year at Salina, that night, of all the flyers we were passing out to the kids individually and telling them about what this program is about and how great it was, we had 12 different parents sign up that night to sign for baseball, which is amazing. We would like to get all, all of, most of our program, all of our kids are from the West End. But we would like to really get into the East Dearborn and teach all of those kids about the great sport of baseball and softball. So now I'm going to hand it over to Mike here, and Mike's going to give you a little bit more particulars.
Hello.
I'm going to have to, did you fill out a card too, sir?
Oh.
Yeah, but we're, we're over, we're over, way over time right now, and I have to cut it short. You have a great program. I know we, we support the City of Dearborn Rec Department. We support your program, but I have to cut, just to be fair to everybody. I mean, you're welcome. Maybe somebody can get a phone number for me, and we'll file, we'll continue this discussion. Thank you very much.
And again, we'd like to, again, thank the board and everybody because we do use your fields and all that stuff.
Yes.
And I don't think, it has been known that how much we appreciate all your time and all your effort to help.
Thank you very much for sharing. Appreciate it.
Next, community member Kathy Martin would like to come to speak to the board about time.
Good evening. I had several things I wanted to talk about tonight, but really, hearing these students and just hearing about the millage, kind of, I was, mentioned to Joe, I was a student at Fortson in 1994 when the first millage happened, and the threat was pay-to-play. I didn't play sports, but I definitely felt with all my friends who did play sports. And we staged a walkout and refused to come back to the building until Dr. Jeremy Hughes came to meet with us. And now I'm watching these students advocate, and it's just making my heart so happy because now I have faith in some of our future possible leaders. But I want to say that since I've been in this position, I've said if we do right by the students, we will always be doing right by the teachers. As teachers, we fought for a contract that improves learning and working
If I can ask you to slow down, please. Thank you.
Don't cut me off, okay? That improves working and learning conditions for kids and staff. While we still have a way to go, the failure of this millage will greatly diminish the district's ability to continue improving learning and working conditions. The DFT has spent the last year advocating for safety for staff and students, for time to allow teachers to do their jobs well. And while this is still a work in progress, I'd hate to see what happens if the progress we've made, if, what happens to the progress we've made if this millage doesn't pass. That's why the DFT is working hard, along with the district, to get this millage passed, and we can continue our work in making this the best district for staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last blue card, employee Nicole Allward would like to come to speak to the board about library media program.
Good evening. I am Nicole Allward, librarian at Epsom Ford High School and the district library media resource teacher. I'm here again to advocate for the library media program. And in a profession that is frequently the first that gets cut in Michigan, I was so happy to hear how many people were here to support the millage. The last few months, I've talked about the, our role as teachers. Today, I want to talk about our role as librarians. The process of removing outdated or damaged books from our libraries is called weeding. In the same way that unsightly weeds hide the beauty of a garden, books that no longer appeal to our students make it difficult for them to discover books that inspire them to love reading. I'm going to expand on this gardening analogy to emphasize the importance of continual library maintenance. Anyone that has done any yard work knows that it is a never-ending process. You weed the flower beds one day, and it feels like the weeds grow back overnight. We also know that if we ignore those weeds, they eventually overtake the garden. The same is true with the library collection. If we work continually to maintain the collection, the job is manageable. But if it is neglected, it becomes a colossal challenge. Our librarians and media secretaries work together to keep up with the library maintenance. But in some schools, their schedules are so full that there's little time left over. It's like the homeowner that has enough time to keep the lawn mowed, but that's about it. We need time to complete these tasks. Librarians are like master gardeners. In the same way that master gardeners use their expertise to create balanced and diverse landscaping, librarians use their expertise to create balanced and diverse library collections. All students should see themselves represented in our libraries and should be able to access materials that help them grow academically and socially. When library staff are stretched too thin, we struggle to be truly effective. We do our best, but it's difficult to accomplish all of our goals without the time dedic, tip, excuse me, without time dedicated to maintaining the library. We have a strong library program in Dearborn. We're a dedicated team, and we have done amazing things with limited time and resources. We are so pleased to finally have the chance to work with all of our grade levels this year, even if it was only for one semester. However, we can't leave our libraries without a librarian for half the year. Numerous studies have shown that access to a certified school librarian is linked to an increase in student achievement. After the millage is approved, please consider investing in the library program so we can continue creating amazing spaces for our students' love of reading to bloom. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one yellow card. The community member Kirsten Stefano did not want to speak, but she wanted to have shared this millage is extremely important to vote yes on. It will allow Dearborn Public Schools to continue operating at its current high level. There won't be any monetary increase. Please vote.
Thank you.
Can I just add, I wanted to say one thing about all of our students. I wanted to say to those students who came forward, we started with a kindness squad, and I think having you come up and share your advocacy and your love for your teachers was very pure. And I could tell how much that you appreciate your student, your teachers. And so I just want to commend you guys for taking time on your Monday to come here and speak. So with that, kudos to you guys.
There was one item mentioned about advocacy. So Dr. Maleko, do you want to let people know what we're allowed to do in terms of advocacy?
Sure. So we have to follow state law, including campaign finance law, and we're in contact with our attorneys. So the school district in our official capacity can only provide information. So during the day, if we're officially, if I'm working as a superintendent officially at different, at a PTA meeting or whatnot, or a school meeting, I can only provide information. We can't advocate a vote one way or another. Now, citizens that are out there, and employees are citizens as well. So when they're not officially working, whether that be a teacher or, you know, a parapro or administrators, myself, when we're out there on our own time, we can, you know, we have the right to engage as citizens. But we have to be very, very careful that we're not using any district resources. So what you will see is, for example, signs that say vote. It doesn't advocate one way or another as an example. The information on our website is vote. It doesn't advocate one way or another, but it is very factually based. So again, we're very careful with this. We have legal counsel that's involved. And I know Mr. Mustin, a lot of the material does get checked through legal before it goes out. And so that's why we're limited as far as the school district with public dollars as to what we can and cannot do. Again, as citizens, individuals in the evening, and Mr. Mustin has also, is also required to put that out to the employees so they know. So communications went out to let employees know what they can and cannot say when they're, when they're working. But we're actually obligated as a district to inform the public under the rules to, to make sure we're getting information out there. sure we're getting information out there. And I would like to add one other thing on our website that's informational. It is also translated in Arabic, so the information is also available there.
Are there any?
Was there any, excuse me, I'm sorry. Was there any other follow-up? Okay, thank you.
Action items? Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
I think we have to pull 17?
Yeah, we have to.
We have to fill in a name.
Trustee Thor?
I had a comment on item six. I do not need it pulled.
Six, okay. Anybody else? Please continue, Madam Secretary.
Move that action items numbered one through 16, 18 be approved as recommended as the agenda with the exception of 17.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion moved by trustee Deambrosio, supported by trustee Petchikoff. We'll go to number six. Trustee Thor?
For those that don't have it in front of them, item six is about replacing playground equipment at one of our buildings, Miller, who was here earlier, and they weren't able to get it last time because their, things were too new. But what I wanted to bring up is that the district is combining funds from several different, several departments to come up with the money for this, and I wanted to let administration know, I really appreciated seeing the cooperation between the different groups to come up with the funds for this project. So thank you very much to the administrators for that. Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay. Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach unanimous vote in affirmative. Let's go to 17, please.
So the background information, this is for the 2024 MASB Board of Directors election. The background information, there's an election for an MASB Board of Directors position, one seat for Region Eight, Group Six, the group in which Dearborn belongs, for a three-year term. The ballot for this election must be returned to MASB by 1:00 p.m. Wednesday, March 6, 2024. The recommended action, move that Dearborn's, Dearborn Board of Education casts its vote for blank as candidate for the MASB Board of Directors position.
Okay, I talked to a few of my colleagues here, I guess we'd like to, we can put any, any names, but I'd like to put the name of Melendi Heinz, is that right? Melendi Heinz? She represents the Wayne Westland Community School District. Are there any other names we want to put forward?
I just want to say one thing. They're all good candidates.
Yes, they are.
They all have good experience. They have different levels of experience. There is an incumbent. Some of them have really excelled in their MASB awards and, and done the training for those awards. So I just want to say that they are all very good candidates. There are two of them that are from our county and one that is not. So just putting out some general information about them.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else? So you want to go ahead and read the motion?
What was her name again? Can you, I have Melanie?
Melindi.
Melindi, okay. Move that the Dearborn Board of Education casts its vote for Melindi Heinz as candidate for the MASB Board of Directors position for Region Eight, Group Six, one seat for a three-year term. So moved?
Support.
Motion is moved by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Mosib. Any other discussion on this matter? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Thank you very much.
Summary of agenda action items?
Please.
Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Rydel. Number three, approval of an award to Henry Ford Health Systems. Number four, approval of an award to Kami. Number five, approval of an award to Benchmark Education Company. Number six, approval of an award to We Build Fund. Number seven, approval of an award to Conkey Painting. Number eight, approval of awards to Crisman Constructions, McCarthy Construction Company, Spence Brothers, Royal Roofing, Daniels Glass Inc., Gray Haven Group, Turner Brooks, Gemstone Painting, Concrete Floor Treatment Inc., Duell Corporation, Absolute Fire Protection, Ecker Mechanical Contractors, Metro Electric, and Best Asphalt Inc. Number nine, approval of change orders per Board Report 23 hyphen 93. Number 10 through 13, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P12. Number 14, approval of financial statement per Board Report 23 hyphen 97. Number 15, approval of the 2024 January graduates. Number 16, approval of the policy updates, changes per Board Report 23 hyphen 98. Number 17, approval of 2024 MASB Board of Director candidate, and number 18, approval of donations.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Board of Education Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Next item?
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
We haven't had any meeting meetings. I did pass out. Everybody's okay with their assignments? Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee McDonald?
I know we are having a town hall this Thursday here in this building, but we are also, and I'm on the Board of the Wayne County Association of School Boards, so if there are any school board members that would like to attend their general membership meeting, they're having one this Thursday at Wayne Risa. Dinner is served at 5:30, and the general meeting starts at 6:00.
Anybody else? Trustee Thor?
Dr. Maleko, earlier you mentioned that next month during a special board presentation on mental health, it's very timely right now. Last week, we had the first verdict from the Oxford shooting that kind of puts it out there to parents that were more responsible for our kids now, that we already knew that. Also, tomorrow's the memorial or the anniversary of the Michigan State shooting, so we're at a time in our society where we need to keep the communication going with our children, whether it is the district providing that information to the students, the staff, the parents. I'm hoping that we're going to continue to do more along those lines. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Just one clarifying thing, and I just confirm, just so that the board is aware, the rules on employees does not apply to the Board of Education as long as there's no, I just want to make sure.
Meaning, we can advocate.
Yeah, but without using, as long as you're not using public, district funds, so just so that everyone's.
So is this room considered a district?
Yes.
So.
This is a district.
I would, I would assume.
Should it be when we're at Kroger, when we're out on weekend?
Or during the day, wherever you are. I didn't want to mention that you're not.
My living room, which we've had this discussion. Yes, trustee Petchikoff?
And just to, piggyback, just to reiterate one more time so that people really, really understand that $41 million breakdown, the 18 mils that goes to the businesses results in $34 million. The, the $7 million that's generated that comes from your home taxes is $7 million. But when you vote on this millage renewal, it is, the bulk of it is being felt by the business community, not by your personal property tax. And I just want everybody to understand that the state assumes we are going to collect that money, no matter what. If this millage fails, we will not be collecting that 18 mils off of those businesses. That's $34 million out of that $41 million total.
Thank you for saying that, and we are very, very thankful for our local businesses, their support. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Next item?
Future meeting dates, Monday, February 19, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, February 19, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rose Nile Boardroom. And Monday, March 11, 2024, P12 Board Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.